This meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I do represent the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Budmets.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Veniziano is absent. Bessesi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanoyka.
Here.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from a previous meeting. May 10th, 2022, City Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the first.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minute be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Bessesi?
Yes, I'd just like to remind my residents that we'll be having a Ward Five Town Hall on June 15th at 6:30 at the Rolling Meadows Library.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Any more ward reports? Okay, no? This meeting is open to the public for the next 20 minutes, and it looks like there is one sign-in on the sheet. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the City Council. Per rules and procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council, or any member thereof, agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Number one, any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person adhere to the following provisions. A, each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. B, each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. C, questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. D, commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the City Council members or any other city officers present. E, discussions shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. F, profanity shall not be used in any former manner. Jonathan Warfel, do you want to come up to the podium?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Warfel, and I wanted to talk on the liquor license application. One thing that I'm concerned about, because that block that it's on is mixed use. We have commercial facing Meacham or Plum Grove Road there, and then behind that is residential. So, what I'm thinking, and then when I went, when I look and I see the entrance to the Red Apple is just one way for entering, and then the parking lot is in the back and then off to the side, and it, the egress is on Dupont, and that's the only place where patrons can exit the Red Apple, and considering drivers might be lacking some judgment possibly, I was thinking maybe you guys could consider putting a no right turn sign down as you exit the Red Apple parking lot, if no right turn down Dupont to the west, or they can just exit to the east and to the traffic light at Kirchhoff and Plum Grove Road. I think that would be proactive and safer and appropriate. That's it.
Thank you. Next up are pending ordinances. Ordinance number 2218, approve liquor license application for a Class A2 liquor license for Anna's Red Apple, LLC DBA, Anna's Red Apple, at 2121 South Plum Grove Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the motion. Has this been seconded?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Any discussion? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we table this item, or postpone it to an uncertain date until the completion of the adjudication for the same petitioner's current violation for a different gaming facility, and that, so after that is adjudicated, and then if any appeals, once those, if they make an appeal, once those appeals are finished, at that time, after that process is through, then the City Council could review this application again. But I think it's premature to, I think it's premature to look at this, given the fact that the petitioner has a different matter currently in adjudication for not following the rules in a gaming license situation. So, I'd make the motion to indefinitely postpone it until those items is discussed, are completed.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Alderman O'Brien?
That was going to be my recommendation or request also, is I'd be in favor of postponing this until the adjudication passes, so we can have a full picture of the information versus a current open item with the current business owner.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Mayor Protem, may I provide some clarification? So, due to the fact that the motion to postpone is indefinite in nature, if that's what the council wants, it would be a motion to table.
Thank you. Motion to table.
And did we have a second on that motion?
I would, yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Did we want discussion on that motion? Or no? Point of order?
Yes, you can have discussion if you would like to call for discussion on that motion.
Do we need a discussion on that motion?
So, my question to this is if we have had any other contact with the petitioner at this point, as far as what their expectations were for the process?
I'm happy to answer that. So, we have reached out to the petitioner to let him know that this item was on tonight's agenda, and did make him aware that the council requested additional information pertaining to other outstanding violations related to the Donato Restaurant Group. I did share with him that it's within the council's prerogative to either approve, deny, or continue the consideration to a future date, so he is aware that those three considerations are on the table for this evening.
Thank you. No further discussion from me. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
I just have one question.
Alderman McHale?
If this is tabled, is there a difference between tabling it to an unspecified date and postponing to when we get the material in from the entities that we need the checks from, or whatever it is that we're waiting on?
Yes, a motion to table would indefinitely remove it from the agenda, and in order to bring it back forward to the council, it would have to be removed from the table at that specific time that you were ready to remove it from the table. If you postpone it to a date certain, you would have to select that date to postpone it at this time.
So, is there a benefit to postponing it to 30 days out? Depending on what comes back, we postpone or table at that point, instead of hanging onto it and going through these motions multiple times?
Yes, it would make it simpler, if that's what the council would like to do, to select the meeting that it would be postponed to. Otherwise, a motion to table removes it indefinitely.
I would make a motion to postpone to a date at staff's advice for this motion.
Okay, so, due to the fact that we have a motion to table on the table at this time, maybe it would be better for the council to consider that motion to table, and if that fails, it would be a motion to postpone to a date certain as selected by the council.
Thank you.
It doesn't.
But it doesn't have to go through the.
So, you could amend the motion as well, to postpone it to the June 21st council meeting, if that is an appropriate amount of time, given the information that's provided in the council packet?
I would say the 28th. The 21st, I believe, is committee of the whole.
Okay. The 28th.
If the petitioner appealed any decisions that were made, would that appeal be worn out by that time?
Probably not. The appeal would probably not be worn out, but at that time you would know, and at that meeting you'd be able to postpone it again if that were the case, if there was an appeal. You would most likely know by that time if an appeal occurred, but you may not.
Yeah, to add to that, you know, we'll have the disposition of how the hearing goes from the, I believe the ninth is the admin hearing date. By the 28th, we'll at least be able to update the council on the status of the violation. Off the top of my head, I can't recall the number of days after the admin hearing is held, if there's a finding of liability, that an appeal can be taken to the circuit court. However, the 20th would give us an opportunity to revisit with the council, and at that time further continue if so desired.
If we went to the meeting thereafter, the first meeting in July, for sure would their appeal process be over, and then we wouldn't have to worry about any of that? I don't know.
It's unknown at this time whether the process would be over. They would probably have a certain amount of time to appeal, and then that would be on a scheduled date, but unknown whether the appeal process would be over at the first meeting in July.
Okay, so I can amend my motion to make it the second meeting in June, whatever that date is.
Okay, and Alderman O'Brien?
I second that, yes, ma'am.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This postponement is adopted.
Yes, this matter is postponed to the second meet, regular meeting of the City Council in June.
Okay. With six in favor and none opposed, this matter is postponed until the June 28th meeting in 2022. All right, line item B, ordinance number 2219, amend Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to adopt and amend the Building Code ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the motion. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Line item C, ordinance number 2220, approve the city's Class 6B Tax Classification Policy and Procedures and Related Amendments to the City Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Has this been seconded?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, Items D and E. Does any alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Ordinance number 22-00, grant approval of a special use to allow an indoor athletic facility, for an indoor soccer training facility and a variation from Section 122-163 from the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances, to reduce the required number of parking spaces for an indoor athletic facility from the approximately 44 spaces required to 21 parking spaces at 3660 Edison Place. E, ordinance number 22-00, amend Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations of the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to ban the use of coal tar pavement sealants that exceed .01 percent, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons within the City of Rolling Meadows. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. Onto new business. Motion to approve, do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant from 5/24/2022? Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the motion. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution. Is there such a motion to consider this resolution? Resolution number 22R55, approve the retainment of a closed session minutes and recordings?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, made the motion. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. That brings the council to other business, and tonight, there are no mayor appointments or proclamations. Any city clerk report tonight?
No, not tonight.
All right, then that brings us to city staff reports. Number one, community items of interest, and I will defer to City Manager Savo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Join the city as we honor our heroes at the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony this Saturday, May 28th at 11:00 a.m., with the ceremony immediately following at the Caroline Monument on Kirchhoff Road. Veterans and their families are invited to participate in the parade, whether on foot or riding in a trolley. Interested veteran organizations are welcome as well. Contact Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sezak at 847-870-9005, if you would like to be included. As a reminder, city administrative offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th, in observance of the Memorial Day holiday, and there will be no garbage collection on that day. Accordingly, refuse and recycling will be collected the day after residents' normal pickup day throughout next week. Please save the date for the Public Works Open House, which is scheduled for June 4th, and will be held at the Rolling Meadows Public Works Facility at 3900 Burdenick Street. This family-friendly event will feature a touch-a-truck for kids, facility tours, demonstrations, and free food while supplies last. This is a great opportunity for residents to learn about the many things our Public Works Department does 24/7/365 to serve our community. The city's summer kickoff celebration, the annual block party, will be held on Friday, June 10th, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. Rocked to tunes from 16 Candles and the Feel Good Party Band, while dining with a variety of, dining from a variety of delicious food trucks. Check out the cool law enforcement vehicle show, city trucks, a canine demo, kiddie train, face painter, balloon artists, and more. Visit the city's website, citirm.org, and Facebook page for more information. As a reminder, the Public Works Department is announcing that resident, excuse me, the Public Works Department is reminding residents that the city's new automated refuse pickup is coming August 1st. For more information, please visit the city's website at citirm.org. Planning for this year's Fourth of July festivities is underway. The city is currently accepting applications from groups, businesses, and individuals that would like to participate in the city's Fourth of July Parade, which will be held on Monday, July 4th at 11:30 a.m. along Owl Drive. Applications to participate are due by Monday, June 20th, and there is no fee. For more information, please visit the city's website. That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the GFOA Popular Annual Financial Report and Triple Crown Awards, and I will defer to Finance Director Tockington.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. This is really a great award. The GFOA is our Government Finance Officers Association. It's really a professional network that sets kind of the best standards for what we do in finance, and really has a push towards transparency. So, by participating in the three awards, we have the Certificate of Achievement, that's where we do our annual audit report we send in. You have your distinguished budget award, so we send the budget in for that, and a popular annual financial report. And that, to me, is like your condensed version, kind of first look, if you really want to dive into finance reports, that's the first one I would start with, it gives you a nice overview. The City of Rolling Meadows has been awarded these three awards this year, the second year in a row that they've gotten all three, so there's your triple crown, and they even sent the little crown. But that's really, you know, a distinguished honor. There's less than about 25 communities in Illinois that have this award, and less than 300 in the nation. So, this really is a distinguished award that really goes out to you, the City Council, for setting priorities and guiding the direction of transparency, and really excellence in financial reporting, and to the city staff that you work hard to put these together and to meet those standards. So, you should take some time to, you know, congratulate yourselves for winning this great award, getting, you know, a higher achievement than most with the triple crown, and really, everyone had an amazing accomplishment with this.
Next item is the April 2022 Financial Report. The financials are in the packet, and if the council has any questions, please contact the Finance Director, Molly Tockington. Next item is the June 4th, 2022, a City Council Draft Agenda, and I will defer to Manager Savo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The draft agenda is included. Given that we're several weeks away, there are only two items at the moment that are on, which are the second readings of the two ordinances that were approved this evening for first reading. I anticipate that additional items will be added before the agenda itself is posted, and it will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act in advance of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any matters not on the agenda this evening? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Based on the, based on the testimony of a citizen tonight, would it be possible to have the Traffic Committee look into his request of having a no right-hand turn sign come out of the parking lot from Anna's Red Apple to Dupont, going to the west, and if that's viable and feasible, and in fact recommended?
Yeah, we will add that to our next Traffic Committee meeting to review.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Sanoyka?
Just to add that, since we have the speaker still with us tonight, if he's not familiar with the Traffic Committee process, City Manager Savo, could you give him an overview of what that process entails, and what, how long that typically takes?
So, the Traffic Committee is a staff committee that meets to review various different So, the Traffic Committee is a staff committee that meets to review various different traffic management types of requests. In this case, given that you're requesting a traffic control device, which would be a no right turn, our team would evaluate what the history of any sort of accidents or any sort of traffic violations or things of that nature have occurred in that area, take into account the proposal for a liquor license and any impacts that may have, and then make a recommendation thereafter on either supporting that no right turn, or maybe some sort of other traffic control mechanism, which would then ultimately come to the City Council in the form of a proposed ordinance amendment, code amendment ultimately, which would make such a change, what you would just call a law, it would put it into law. So, at this stage, we can get your contact information and follow up with you as far as next steps, and certainly keep you informed on how that proceeds through the Traffic Committee.
Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Basassi, for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned.